Good evening and welcome to the Act and Selectmen's meeting of September 9, 2020. It's 6:00 P. M. We'll call the meeting to order. First, we'll pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the red flag which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Town Administrator's Weekly Update.
Good evening. So the first thing I want to lead off with, actually as Mr. Neal is walking in and having a seat, was to take a minute to inform the board and thank Mr. Neal for his efforts. He drafted a letter that he put together on behalf of the Mary Grant Committee and he asked Lowe's for the donation of some picnic tables, new picnic tables for Mary Grant's. So he drafted a very nice, well-written letter. He signed one and I signed one and he went down to Lowe's and they made that donation of two picnic tables. So that was very appreciative and good work on his part. The committee certainly appreciates it and it will look nice down there. And I think he told me they ended up with three altogether because he had one as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that was nice. The tax bill should have hit everybody's mailbox by now. If you don't see it by the end of the week, certainly give us a call. Dennis was in today from O'Donnell's and dealt with a lot of people that had questions, concerns. Overall, the people that we saw today were appreciative of the tax rate staying the same. We talked about the home stay exemption dropping and why the tax bill should have dropped a little bit because of that. So we appreciated that. Next item is the budget books. If you recall, the Treasurer sent out an email saying that she was looking for budget books from last year. I'll send an email to the Warren and Finance should they have any that we can reuse, but also to the Board of Selectmen. She'd like to take everything out of it and bring back the binder if you have it.
Okay.
Bobby Anderson called earlier this week and wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen and the town for the flowers. He appreciated you thinking of him during this difficult time, his wife passing, so that I would pass on the gratitude that he shared with me. So thank you. Just an update on the Article 43 funds. As you recall, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Committee approved them all last week. That was on Wednesday. I sent you a couple of emails to keep you involved and included in the loop. The Langley Shore Drive rep did actually come into the town hall for a different matter. I hope that you saw that email. And while he was here, I offered to print off some 10-99s forms so we could get that processing. He did get them, filled them out, brought them right back. So in this week, all three were, all three checks were cut. Completed, the two for Langley and the one for Leeside. So those will be going out in tomorrow morning's mail. So there was no holdup on our end. They're cutting right out once we assisted them with the W- the 10-99. You might have heard on the news today, or yesterday today, that the state of Maine is now issuing some marijuana, recreational marijuana licenses. It's taken about three years, but they've issued, I think, eight they started with in the state. Acton would have to vote on even allowing it. So we're not at a point where you guys need to think about that, but...
Is it vote to opt in? Is that what it's called?
You have to vote opt in, right. Miamisville is offering a Zoom class on marijuana and kind of what direction it's heading to. Talks about petitions and ways that people can get in on the ballot if the Selectmen so choose not to move forward. But I did forward an email to you guys about upcoming Zoom meetings. If anybody's interested on that. Speaking of Zoom meetings, there is a labor employment Zoom class that will be coming tomorrow from Miamisville as well. Next item is town hall cleaning. In a memo to staff, last week, one of our residents brought up some concern, pointed out some items that, you know, we might not have thought about as well as we needed to. First thing I did was reach out to Miamisville and the Governor's Office to get the checklist to make sure that we were following what we needed to. I spoke to Michael Livingston of Miamisville and I forwarded you guys the email. He says that the, every building is different. Schools are different than municipal buildings, municipal buildings are different than Walmart, everything's different. We have a scheduled regularly cleaning, we have a regularly cleaning schedule. And that is sufficient and that meets, that meets the requirements of COVID. It is recommended that, you know, the employees or committees, wards, whoever, or someone outside person has to wipe down other areas. I know that in our office and certain downstairs are wiping them down before they go. Bathrooms was a concern that brought up and I talked to him about that as well. Downstairs bathrooms should not be a concern because really you only have three people using it. And there's Lysol, there's wipes down there. You can't walk in downstairs and get past that table. It shouldn't. So the public is not using the downstairs bathroom, as far as I know. Upstairs bathroom, they recommended that we put one for staff only, which we've done, and the other ones for public. And they're being clean in accordance with, with the Governor's Guidelines. We did check to make sure that some of the products that she was using were up to snuff and, you know, were, would kill the virus, if that's even possible. We confirmed that that was happening. We double-checked all of our hand sanitizers and everything to make sure that they were the right amount of proof and that, you know, we were, had it, that everybody was being protected. One of the things that we did do after the input that we had last week is we ordered four, I think, four tables that, I don't think about four feet high maybe, four, just a small table, a certain height and width that's going to go by each entrance when we walk in. Even though we have them at the counter, it's something they can walk in or they'll be able to walk in. Each exit, there'll be a table where you'll have masks full of the wifies and all that. The way it works now, when you walk into downstairs, we walk to the window, those stand signs are sitting there and handing up masks and all that. But this would give them the opportunity to disembark on the way out too if they'd like, and it's a little extra precaution. It'll leave it there for all the boards of committee. So it was nice to reach out to them and see that we were in compliance. There was the small things, the cloths that you could see were missing. That was a great point and for Cable not to put those out. I think we're, for the sake of that, I did send out an email to staff that you guys got as well, just saying, you know, just a reminder that this, 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 and this is available, you know, that it's got a full closet. I don't leave it out. You know, come up, ask if we need refills. We have everything. If you don't tell me, I don't know we need it. So I put that email out to make sure, and I just haven't heard from anybody that they have any concerns. So I have to assume that they don't. So...
I have one question while we're on that. Do we happen to, maybe Cable knows the answer, do we have a stand that the microphone can go on and we can eliminate the podium? So in other words, just a mic stand?
So they're not touching it?
Yeah, instead of not having, because we get people to come up for, you know, different things during our meeting.
And they tend to...
Well, you do. You, you, yeah, but they set, you set paperwork on it, you touch the podium or whatnot. We can't clean it in between people coming up. Maybe we should think about just having a microphone instead of just a...
I have a feeling that they would have some and...
Yeah, I will tell Mike.
Okay.
Follow him. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yep, thanks.
Anything else on that? You know, or something that... Just letting you know that we did reassign the planning board emails to everybody. Doesn't fail, obviously, when, when any, if somebody wanted to use a committee regardless of what committee, if they haven't had an email, we can ask for it immediately. I went through today and emailed all of the new numbers, a direct link, their username, their password. Asked them to reply that they were able to get in. So prior to Thursday's meeting, I'm going to have that, they were all set up. There was a Mary Grant meeting on Saturday, September 19th, at 10 o'clock at the Mary Grant. It is going to be filmed. One of the members did request, Mr. Wintle, that you hear the first time.
The time is up.
At 10 o'clock on the 19th. I have the liaison. There's a couple things that I share with you, plenty of time before that meeting.
Yep.
We had scheduled an agenda tonight. The Road Commissioner and the Treasurer were going to meet with the board to go over some items of, I don't want to say concern or pickups that have come about as we swatted over the independent contractors after speaking with David, who was the liaison of the roads. This is a recommendation that we wait until other positions fills, if we can do all at once, when we confirm that that worked with the Road Commissioner, Treasurer and everybody. So that's been put off. We'll definitely get it scheduled in the next couple of weeks, depending on what direction you guys go with that motion. The last thing that, I'm not looking for a decision on it tonight because I had more information to gather. Code enforcement is looking to possibly do some work downstairs. I had met with him a couple of weeks ago and I reached out to interview after a conversation with Ed today. I've sat down with him again to, so we could put a firm number together when we are at 45,000 to 5,000. There is, he does have approximately $1,500 in an equipment line. I left him a handout from the Treasurer. Not really full discussion tonight because we're trying to figure out how, if it was a first level, so I can come out to the maintenance, how the pay would look. Because the original recommendation or that thought was that he didn't work and that we could just do like earn comp time. But after speaking with the Treasurer, earn comp time must be time and a half and doesn't comfortably fit. So let us do a little more chatting about it behind the scenes and see what we can come up with to recommend. It was 1,500 in the building material. I think that might be what that number stuck. But we know, I got it, didn't...
Well, I did have a conversation with him last night and he mentioned it. And when he gave me a number, I'm like, I wasn't, it didn't sound logical to me either because lumber prices have skyrocketed.
Oh, yeah.
You can't buy a two-by-four for under eight bucks. So, yeah.
And I did kind of say that, you know, you told me this, I have it, and it's going to go so high, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
But it does say here, you can include the phone, the computer, the electrical, the time. So there's some other things to think about. It's certainly not out of the question. But we'll rearrange the board. There are a couple of options. If this was the door there, the idea is to move the deputy code enforcement officer directly by that door. You put a wall behind her. The secretary would say where she is. And that would build a little, like a little small pocket for Mary down there. But they could move the desk now. There's certainly enough of the plexiglass, you know, until you guys make a decision or we can figure out, you know, where it needs to come from. You know, at some point, we need to say, are we going to have a special town meeting? Are we going to, you know, what do we do with the zoning, the possible, what was the, oh, the planner salary that you guys told? We got positions from elected officials that came due in June that, I mean, they're still active, but maybe that's the time to kind of think about that. I don't know. But the Treasurer doesn't normally have a lot of concerns when it comes to finding things for things. But things, as she started to reimburse, that's why I gave you this. I mean, there's a lot of things that have come up that are, that are concerned. And this isn't just with, just for full clarity, let's move off the whole code enforcement front, front of the canal. You know, I'm talking about a printer that I had a minute ago that, you know, we've been talking about getting laminators and a color printer. There are people with their hunting fishing license and stuff, but it's not something I budgeted for. There's already a decrease in revenues. There's, for two years in a row now, April, June, and then July, August, she had 15% decrease and then 8% decrease. The state revenue sharing has dropped 34% since July and August. She had no idea what September's going to do. Additional costs, FEMA's denying a lot of the expenses. She's having, I told her individually, that she's having to work with a representative in North County to try to reword some of the things. So FEMA's only covered expenses through 12/31 for PPE, Lysol, what happens after that. Additional building cleaning costs, which depending on what happens over the few months, took them up. The winter covering for people waiting in line outside, you know, that was going to force them in a different way. The paid leave, this is a big one. Twelve, employee is entitled 12 weeks paid leave. If a school of daycare closes due to COVID, so we would need to hire a temporary employee and maybe be able to pay for that. That money would need to come out of somewhere. Anticipated general assistance leave, special time meeting, I talked about rental space and more technology possibly for committees if we end up going back to Zoom. The number really knows what's going to happen. So just something to think about. Certainly not intended to sway a decision either way. I'm not looking for a decision tonight because we have some information to gather for you. But she put that together. I wanted you to see it. She also emailed you updated expense and revenue numbers that she asked that you look at. And that is all I have, Madam Teo.
Thank you. All right. Warrants and bills. I've signed.
I've signed. Yep.
David, did you get the warrants and bills done? I thought I saw you.
Yep. So those are all done. We just need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
I moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? All right. We're going to skip, skip or put aside the minutes of the last meeting until next week. Monday was a holiday, so they're not done. Number six, department heads, committee chair updates. Do we have any out there? No? Okay. Old business. We just kind of talked about the town hall cleaning.
Yeah, I put it in both places, my bad.
Right. So we'll skip A because she just answered that. Meeting room use?
So one of the other, follow up with some of the input that was brought in for you well last week. I mean, you know, do we, does the board want to reconsider a lot of people leaving the hall? Is it, you know, where the work outing has turned from, is it green to yellow? You know, is it something that you want to say less of best and stop letting them use it? Do you want to do it on a per cases basis? What are your thoughts? I think I put it on there where it mentioned last week.
Do we have anybody right now scheduled?
We have one person, the road meeting that...
Okay.
And that is next, Tuesday, Wednesday.
And then we have the other one there.
Somebody doing a function here?
Thompson.
Oh, they already happened.
That was last...
That's already happened.
Yeah, that was last, last Sunday, Sunday.
So we're looking at one. I think, you know, we're looking in the crowd here. We've got tables all separated. We're trying to do our thing here. And then to invite a pile of people up here that we're not going to be able to regulate probably isn't a good idea to continue on.
The only way we can do it, I mean, the only way I think safely we could do it is if we have a cleaning crew come in afterwards and clean it. And I don't know how...
Right afterwards.
Right afterwards.
Yeah.
And if you do that, I mean, it's a private event. It depends really should be on the...
Right.
And I would expect it to be. We'd have to, we'd have to charge them for a cleaning.
Nobody's really knocking on the door of bathroom use.
Right.
If you want, you can just...
Can we just kind of...
Yeah. But if it gets out that, if it gets out that we're open for business, you're going to get a floodgate open because nobody else is.
I think to be cautious.
Yeah.
We just get through the last, it's really a town thing.
Mm-hmm.
We'd be responsible for that. But anybody that's using this town hall that we're not supervising or there isn't somebody that's supervising it, that point, we can't dictate whether or not they're six feet apart and all this other stuff.
Yeah.
We're better off just shutting it down to only town business only at this point.
I, I think that's probably a smart thing, especially based on what Sanford's going through right now.
Because the hours aren't meeting here anymore, right?
Sanford's a huge hot spot, so...
None of the Boy Scouts or any of that stuff they have announced.
I think it speaks volumes to the committees that need to be, you know, working on...
Right, they've got to.
Certainly, you know, to the staff or the residents that exit this way. I mean, what's the best in the hall, you know? Because it's safer for everybody. At least if we know when the meetings aren't, people have to be in here. We can, we can arrange something.
But with committees and, you know, like this class, who's, the committee's going to have a chair. That's, that's a job to make sure everybody runs, you know, by what we're doing here. By having public come up, we can't dictate what they do when they show up.
Right, right.
So we obviously got to keep our committees rolling.
Can we put something up on the wall that, you know, six feet apart, your masks?
I feel like we have signs at the end.
I know. But I'm just, you know, just like as a checklist, just, you know, whatever. People are tired at night and...
But we're not. I mean, that was one of the things too that was mentioned. I mean, you know, we don't want to, I think it was, you know, the recommendation or the statement last week, I'm not quoting anybody, but something to be effective. We want to ask people that are already volunteering for the town, ask them to wipe down their area. Do you know what I mean? I don't want it...
I'd like to have somebody come in and do it. I just, I...
For the six feet apart, the mask, those types of things.
So can we, can we, we've got to schedule obviously for all the committees.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they've already scheduled when they're having their meetings.
Yeah, right now the planning board and the selectmen are the only ones meeting.
Okay, so...
At the, at the...
Yeah. So we look at it from here on out, you know, obviously the scheduling that we do for the committees, we space them out and try to make it so that we can line up a cleaning person for that.
Right. Can we put something up and try to find a cleaning person for just part-time?
So just so that I can understand, so my, after, after a meeting of, with planning board, this Thursday, my offering, you know, an hour of clean to the individual that cleans either that Thursday night, first thing Friday morning, after the meeting with the town or committee.
I would think that'd be reasonable.
I would think right after the meeting.
Is an hour enough time to come in here and efficiently clean the place?
I think just this room.
Yeah. And why, I mean, you're going to do this room and the bathrooms?
Do you...
Because that's going to have to be done. Because you know damn well whoever's attending a meeting is going to have to use the restroom.
And then doing the door handles.
What about, I mean, I know, I know you're kind of looking at Cheryl and I don't know, I mean, who you thought of, but I don't know about like the camera people too, if that would be something like if Cheryl, you know, if, if they would want. If they don't, that's fine. But I'm just saying, you know, putting that out there, they're already here. Maybe they would want that extra hour. I don't know. But...
That was, that was, she's happy to do it.
Okay. And I didn't know that. So I just...
Frank, you're on. So if that's okay, we'll keep that in.
Yep.
All right, that's fine.
So at this point, what, how we handle this? We're going to just, to committees only?
Yep, committees only. And then Cheryl, committee clean.
She's going to be lined up for each, after each meeting.
Yep. And we'll try not to have five in one week. I mean, and there's only a couple, couple meetings.
There's not a lot of committees.
Right. So there's only a couple. So, all righty. Personnel policy.
All right. Well, in turn, you, you have the personnel policy. This is on there. Return to page three. So I have an old and a new. So just for full clarity.
On D roll.
So do you want to close anything deep?
Yep.
So in, since July, in early July, you guys made a change to this section. It used to say employees may be excused from work, employees may be excused from work due to reasons outside of their control as determined by the Board of Selectmen and/or the Town Administrator's such as snow days, extended holiday breaks, or building maintenance issues. Employees will receive a regular compensation for such closings only if the closing occurs during their regular scheduled workouts. So originally, when you guys took out the words extended holiday break, you believed based on the conversation, I went back and reviewed the tape, that was, that was taking, that was taking out extended holiday breaks. So you're still going to pay for all the other, you know, any other thing.
Snow days and...
But what was brought up last week is a valid point that as long as that next sentence stays in there. So the new one says, determined by the word, such as snow days or building maintenance issues. If you, so you've got two options. You can either take that next line out altogether and that will clearly say that snow days, building maintenance issues are something outside of their control. Employees may be excused from work for reasons outside of their control as determined by the Board of Selectmen. But as, take that line out or you can leave it in and put the extended holiday breaks back in.
Say that again? Extend what?
You have to decide if you want extended holiday breaks paid and then we figure out how to work it. So if you guys want to have that conversation first, then we'll figure out how you want to work.
How many extended holiday breaks do we have other than Thanksgiving?
So Thanksgiving, it depends on how they call. Because if Christmas falls on Thursday, you know, you could ask them to close Thursday and Friday. Fourth of July this week, this year fell on Saturday, the Saturday. And I'm not kidding, Acton was probably the only town in the state of, you know, the only town open on that Friday. So, you know, someone can make a request that they close on that Friday. Policy says that you would pay for Saturday. So for those of us that would work that Saturday and worked out paid. If we would have closed that Friday, then we would have to use flex time or take it unpaid. It's your option.
Well, there's two options here. I mean, we can either pay for it, put the line back in, pay for that day or two or whatever it's going to be, or we strike that out and if they feel like working on that day, they can.
Uh, no.
I mean, well, no, I'm talking about the department. Say, say you have a different department wanting to work. They can do that and they can use their own time.
Yeah, there's a lot of, that really isn't overwhelming. The only reason why is because we don't, I mean, the board determines the hours of the town hall. I mean, you don't want the tax collector's office open and not the treasurer's office or that code hearing. It should, it, the play is one against the other. It doesn't, you know, I mean, I appreciate that. But I just feel like it's, either the town hall's closed or the town hall's open.
How about a line in there that...
Some people say non-along.
How about a line in there that would state that if one of our paid holidays, whether you worked that Saturday or Sunday or not, if, in other words, if a, if a holiday falls on a Saturday and it's a paid holiday that we normally pay, the following Monday would be the holiday for the town. So in other words, if Fourth of July falls on a Saturday, we'd be closed Monday. You get the holiday.
Yeah, but that...
Do you get paid?
You can do that, but that doesn't, that doesn't address what we brought up last week.
No, but that takes care of one issue.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure that the other piece is an issue because, you know, I mean, some years are better than others. Some years you get...
Right, and some years you don't.
Six holidays, some years you get four. I mean, just depending on how the calendar calls. But, but that's, I mean, that's something you can do it however you want. The town just needs to know, you know, in advance.
Right.
So by that list it out, they look at the town and say, yeah, we finished here yet. You know what I mean?
Can you add a line that just says, will be paid at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen?
Yes. So it would say employees may be excused from work due to reasons outside of their control as determined by the Board of Selectmen.
Just snow days and...
And then, what do you mean?
But in other words, in other words, Thanksgiving, for instance, a lot of places are closed the day after Thanksgiving.
Right.
I don't know whether we have in the past. I don't remember.
We always close the day after. But we also check with chaplain, with levelling, with outward. They don't get paid the day after.
Okay.
They use their flex time, but we can.
It's in the budget. I mean, you can start...
Yeah, it's, yeah.
But if it's...
You have to decide tonight. You can, you can...
Yeah, we're going to think this one out and...
Yeah. I want to wait till next week.
A lot of different pieces to it.
All right. And that's all I had on the personnel policy.
Okay.
D, tanker truck.
Tanker truck. At this point, I have no update from the fire chief. He's still working on putting stuff in the area.
Okay. New business. General Assistant Public Hearing.
So it's that time of year, once a year, we're required to have a public hearing to talk about the general assistance ordinance. I have essentially given the entire packet. If you look on the that side, it talks about the adoption process and the municipal officers must adopt local general assistance ordinance yearly and the attachments. You've got to have a public hearing. It's got to be advertised. People have to write and receive these numbers and let you know if they have any concerns. So I put this together with a date of September 29th at 6:00. It goes to you guys.
Okay.
Is there any changes in general assistance this year?
There are some of the, a couple of the minimums have changed for some of the bigger households.
Has it gone up or down?
It's gone down. It's gone down. Last and possible qualify for that. That was one of the other, I don't know, the paper's list.
What was the date you said that was going to be?
We're going to...
29th at 6:00.
29th, a Tuesday.
Oh, it is?
Is it a Tuesday?
So the 30th?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to do 30th instead?
Yeah, sorry.
It's fine. We just do our meeting afterwards?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. We have catering application, liquor license.
For Above and Beyond Catering, this is Gina Sawtow. She is a licensed caterer and has the legal license from the state. She did come in, showed proof of insurance and gave a $50 fee. And this is, she tells you it was on West Shore Drive, small bar setup that brought a bunch. We talked about this the last time. You had a day one and talked about whether or not, clearly what kind of information you wanted me to gather to present to you for. And I recall it really wasn't, you know, wasn't a whole lot. It wasn't any. So this is, you know, remember, we said in the past, this isn't so much approving it. It's signing that you're acknowledging the number of points that are going to happen in your town. And then this form goes to the state and then maybe you should do a license.
We need to make a motion?
Is there any insurance that she's supposed to be putting forward to us or...
Yep, I have the insurance.
Oh, you have it all? Okay.
And then that and a fee.
Okay. Okay. I'll make a motion. We accept the, or we grant the license or the, yeah, I guess it's a license for Above and Beyond Catering. I'll make a motion, we accept the, or we grant the license, or the, yeah, I guess it's a license, for above and beyond catering, for a one-day function?
Can I get a second, maybe?
Excuse me, I'm just reading through this, what'd you say, Ed?
He just wanted a second.
I made a motion.
He made a-
Made a motion to accept it.
Made a motion to accept it.
I'll, I'll second that.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed?
And Ken, you have the original?
Okay.
The other one, I have the one that was brought in that, so you could have your sign.
Okay. All righty, um, okay, we got appointments next.
We have one more member of the Mary Grant Committee, which is over there, she was on the Mary Grant Committee, maybe not last year, but she has been on before, so she'd like to be reacquainted, and the other one is for an alternate planning board member, this is actually an individual that was interested originally, I think I presented it to you guys some time ago, and when the opening came, I reached out, someone that found him was a little interested, and he had a conversation with the code enforcement, sent me an email, and said that he thought he was thinking the alternate position, that's old, that he's not, so, he'd like to be reacquainted.
We'll start with a Mary Grant Committee member, certificate of appointment title 38 MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, 2. Janelle Zarba, the Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, Dew, in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Mary Grant Committee Member within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6:30 21, given under our hand this ninth day of September 2020.
Make a motion, we appoint Janelle?
Zarba?
Yep, Zarba, to the Mary Grant.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved, it's been seconded, all in favor, all opposed? Thank you. You're welcome. Go. All right, then the next one we have, certificate of appointment title 38 MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Frank Crunkel, the munis- did I say it right, Crunkel? The Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, Dew, in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Alternative Planning Board Member within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6:30 2021, given under our hand this day, this ninth day of September 2020.
Make a motion, we appoint Frank Crunkel to the Planning Board as a alternate member.
I will second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed? All right, D, does anybody wanna make a motion? We can, yeah? Do you guys wanna do a public comment first, and then we can-
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
All right, how about public comment? Any public comment?
I won't touch it.
Yeah, stay back.
Robin Ham, I just wanna let the town people know that, you people know that this town is going to hell, because when you ask a friend to do something for you, it's, we have people out there that always wanna, I don't know, backstab a person, or whatever, it's really sad that you can't ask a friend to do something for you, and we have a lot of people out there that, you know, that does a lot for this town, and asking a friend to do something for me is, you know, and I put that person in a, in a spot, and I don't, I not feel comfortable with that. And there's a lot of people out there that wants to stab everybody, and that's why we don't have volunteers for these committees to serve on these things, because there's people out here that always want to stab somebody in the back. And I apologize to the, to the friend for putting that person in that predicament, and I hope these town people will think about what they're doing to our friendships, you know, in this whole town, and I'm very upset what on last week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin, I'd like to comment on your comment, I feel your frustration, you don't have to apologize to anybody. Town of Acton's generally a good place, unfortunately, what happens is, you get the same people who complain, nitpick, and this and that, and it makes, Acton, the last meeting was embarrassing.
Absolutely.
We had people from other towns here, state representative want, you know, someone who wanted to be a state representative, a Selectman from another town, and it, there was an embarrassment what happened, the circus that happened last week. The town of Acton's generally a good place, except when you have a, a group of people who seem to think that they're, they're doing good by stirring the pot all the time, and, you know, when I ran for Selectman here, I, I saw the town going in a direction I didn't like. And I've come up here, and I've tried to be as, as good as I can be, I'm very opinionated, I don't like some of the people that come up to the podium because of this, it would be very, it would be a nice thing to be able to come up to a meeting without somebody stabbing somebody in the back with their alternative motives, nitpicking, it would be awful nice, and you don't deserve, you don't have to give the town of Acton an apology.
Well, I just, it very, it hurt me very badly last week for that frank line, to go through that, and I just think, you know, we're all in this town, we're all neighbors.
Yep.
We're all trying to do the best for this town, and if we can't help each other to do something, you know, if I'm out, I'm in Rhodes, and it's their family members stuck on a hill or whatever, the case they've been slid off the road.
You pull them out.
But it can't happen, because I'm on town, town time, so it makes me feel that I have to go around them, because I can't jeopardize the town of Acton spending money on pulling somebody out of here, that's my opinion.
And I, I feel your pain, believe me.
Any other public comments? All right, if not, um-
I have a question, and I'm not, this is in regards to last week, but not in regards to what was brought up, but, am I okay to start another fundraiser for our family?
Far as I'm concerned, you are.
Yes, you are.
Do you believe that violates that line?
No.
I understand the other piece, I don't want to do, I took responsibility for that.
If they have a problem with them, they can come right up here and do whatever they want.
But I wanna know before I start.
No, there's no issue with it.
There shouldn't be a problem with the fundraiser.
If we've done it, can you continue to do that?
Nope, you're fine.
Definitely. All right, anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we do executive session, 405-6A, personal matter.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay, all opposed?
Jen, I'm gonna leave this paperwork, all the signed stuff right here for you.
All righty, come for a motion?
Make a motion, we come out of executive session at 7:08.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed?
Just for clarity, we can always add the 405-6A, pursuant to the personnel matter, which was the reason we went in.
Sorry.
And we have the list of six citations, and they wanna hear you say those two words, please.
Would you like me to redo it? I will. Make a motion, we come out of executive session, 405-6A, personal matter at 6:08.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed? All right.
Okay.
All righty.
I'd like to make a motion that we reject all our applications that we received for the District Two Road Commissioner at this time, and instruct the town admin, town administrator to repost it for two weeks.
I'll second that.
I'm staying.
So, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed?
Abstention.
So, just for clarity, so today's the ninth, so I get it after tomorrow, the deadline will be is 3 o'clock on the 23rd.
Okay.
All right, announcements, do we have any announcements? Anybody? We know Mary Grant's getting together September 19th at 10 a.m.
My mom is this Thursday, and the planning board, um, is meeting here on Saturday, the opening's posted on the website.
Okay. You said planning board's meeting here, how are you setting up? Have you figured that out yet?
Um, I don't-
I believe that's what I'm saying, is it's, or it is downstairs, come up and do it?
Well, the director of planning, I'm more than confident, we've had some more conversations.
Beautiful.
We have six feet of bars, and we've got plenty of stuff, you know, we do, depending on what decisions happen, well, actually, it's a point that you brought up. Um, he's looking for a projector, like a projector downstairs, he has a wall, he doesn't wanna keep that one, because he's gonna maybe still use it.
Yeah.
But he wants to buy another set up here, we have the draw screen and the portable one, but he prefers a different one. Instead of, it just reflects better, five or $600, I said, so was that, can we have the equipment line? So, he's kinda shuffled, so, we will do, you know, if they're gonna be in here, that's gonna definitely be a priority, but we've got it, that's kind of one more thing, we just gotta weigh.
We've actually needed one here, anyway.
Yeah, just to-
Because anytime you try to set it up, you've, you know, you're playing with the book, it's like doing the old super eight millimeter at the house, you know? You're putting, using a book, and you're doing this and that, trying to make it work, and, yeah.
Well, yeah, and I think that was just April Biden, so we'll, I don't think that he needs it for Thursday, because Thursday's the primary training, and the primary call.
Right.
And then, um, the sidewalk, whatever, that's everyone.
Okay. All right, well, now somebody wanna make a motion to a juror?
I'll make a motion with a juror.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed? Good night, everybody, thank you for coming.
It's posted on the website, it's been reviewed.
All right.